See, it's all coming together now.
Yeah.
None for you, Dave?
And the flip.
None for you.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to open the Shastberry School District meeting to order at 6:30. And we will begin with citizens' comments. Are there any citizen comments? Tim?
Yes. At our last meeting, I talked about the hour code exercise that they did here at the school, part of Computer Science Week, and our staff did a great job having a lot of exercises that involved getting kids into programming. And one of the things in particular that they did was they introduced the kids to the Scratch programming language, which is a programming, a visual language that kids can program in blocks. And after they did that, my daughter and some of her friends formed a group on Scratch, and they've been writing code and analyzing other people's code, which I said last time, but what I didn't say last time was that the name of their Scratch group is Team Eagles, and that's spelled underscore team underscore Eagles underscore. Very important. And that the leader of the group is my daughter, River, and she is the Warrior Master.
Warrior Masters?
The Warrior Master.
Warrior Master.
Warrior Master. Her friend Lily Zens is WC gymnast, and their friend Maya Perry is Mimi Girl Soccer. And it's important that all of those things be entered into the record, and I've got it written down.
Okay, thank you.[97.25][97.25][laughter] I was still on the second hand.
You missed one of the underlines, too.
There you go. Anybody else have anything? Okay, going right into the superintendent's report.
Oh, I'm first tonight. Well, I thought there are some really great things going on in the district, and I just appreciate being here tonight to share them with you. It's good to be back. Jeff, I don't know if you're sharing anything about the coaching and the MTSS work that you're doing on Friday? Is that part of your...
A little bit, but you can talk to it if you like.
I would just say, the district, all of the schools are working very collaboratively now, which is really a great step forward for us, looking at all of our student assessment data and how we can use that to better focus our instruction. We have a coach that's working with us. Her name is Jan Willie. She's coming here Friday, and she's been working with all of the schools to really look at different protocols and ways to set up systems that are really effective for looking at how are our students doing and how can we move forward with better instruction. So it's exciting work for any school by itself, but it's also really exciting that the principals and directors of the SVSU are all working together as a collaborative team to improve our instruction. And I think that we've really grown in that way, that all the principals and members of that team are trying to help each other because we're all at different stages of development. And I think that we're really taking some great steps forward in improving our instruction and also our curriculum for all of our students. There've been some really great curriculum teams working as representative groups from all of the schools and all of the grade levels. We're working in mathematics, English Language Arts, science, and really moving forward in all of those different areas to solidify our curriculum and align it with the common core, which is a significant process, and we're really moving forward on those things. So sometimes the teachers are moving around and going to some of these different events, and I would like to thank the school for sending your representatives to be part of that work because it really has brought the awareness and the conversations up and really focused on good academic instruction for our students. So I think, I'll leave it at that because I know you like to have a nice timely meetings, Fran, but if you have any questions, you can ask me to add any more questions.
If anybody's got any questions, they're fine. But you're first because usually Jim has to go to the...
He leaves, right. Well, so I won't go on and on tonight, okay?[272.27][272.27][laughter] But I'd be happy to share. Oh, we also are working on the Smarter Balance Assessment, the S-Back testing, which will be starting, the window opens March 17 and goes through June. That is the new state assessment for all of our students, grades three through, here it would be six. And that will be in math and English. We also will be doing science kneecap, but that's a little bit later in spring. But the S-Back is new to all of us. It's really going to be a rollout for us and a kind of a walk-through. The whole state is going through this process, so we're trying not to panic or [laughs] because everyone's learning how it all is going to work because it is an online testing system, which is a little bit different than what we're used to. But we're fortunate that we have been doing the math testing online, so in some ways there are similarities to that, and I think that will help people be more comfortable implementing that. So thanks to Jeff and the staff for starting to get that rolling because there are a lot of administrative tasks to do, and we're getting there, making progress, a little more awareness every day as we get information from the state. So we'll see how that all goes. It's new to us this spring.
Okay.
Dave?
Donna, do you know the legislative breakfast that was scheduled for Monday morning canceled?
I didn't hear a date. I didn't hear a date.
Okay.
Okay, next. We'll do the financial. Next is the Treasury's report. The only question I have on that is the '96 school bond. It says 25. I thought in the last audit there was $15,000 left on that that we just had recently. So we'd get clarification on that. Other than that, I think we're, everything else looks okay. Anybody else have any comments?
This is not a question about the Treasury's report, really, but about the year-to-date this report.
Okay.
This budget status report. The, looking at the general state support grant line on the budget status report, year-to-date, we've only received $258,000 through January, so about a tenth of that grant. And I know that it's timed. There's several installments. Rick would be able to explain this, I'm sure, if he were here. But I'm wondering, but I'm sort of surprised that at this point we've only gotten 10% essentially of the total, and I'm not sure where that money is. I'm curious to know where that money is, whether it's sitting in the Montpelier or in the state, or in the town coffers perhaps, because we're collecting it when taxes are due in November, I believe. It comes into the town, and the town doesn't send it all upstate. They hang on to it, I believe, until it's time for them to send it to the school districts. So just curious about the timing of that and where it all is.
I'm not aware of any grant money for the school coming to the town.
Yeah, it's not, it's just that it's, we write our checks as taxpayers to the town, and then where it goes after that is the question. So it doesn't go, I believe that it doesn't go to Montpelier if it's coming to the state, to the school districts, that it isn't, you know, sent up there. It's kept here locally.
Were you talking about a grant coming to us or about the tax money going to the...
It's tax money.
This is tax money. I'm sorry, because it's called a, it's referred to as the general state support grant, but it is the tax collection that's, you know, that's passed on.
Yeah, I think that gets paid around town meeting time, so any minute now, I would say. And yeah, I guess Bill Fisk, acting as your treasurer, pays it out of town's funds.
Yeah, and there's, I think there's installments so that it's not all at once, and maybe the balance is all due in March, yeah.
Anything else? Anybody else? Okay. Need a motion, a second to approve the...
So moved.
Second.
The Treasury's report?
Treasury's report, yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And next we have, I don't know what the budget work is on there. I didn't have anything on budget work, so let's, okay.
I might be left over for last time.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking, but I don't think Mary Lee took that up. Okay, next will be the consent agenda. There's four sets of minutes. Is that January 5th, January 12th? Yeah, yeah. January 14th, January 26th. Questions or comments or changes or...
Yeah, I had one question, Fran.
Okay.
On the January 12th minutes.
Yep.
On page two, line 34, this is during one of the meetings, maybe the first meeting where we were talking, the first time we were talking about the math intervention specialist. Where the line 34, Shastberry did have two title teachers a year or so ago. I wasn't sure that that was true, so I wanted to just clarify whether we actually did have two title teachers, and if so, when it was.
I think it was the year before I was here, so...
Okay, it wasn't last year.
Twelve, thirteen, no.
Okay.
So two years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was it two full-time positions or 1.5?
I'm not sure if she was 1.5 or not.
I thought it was a half time.
So, okay, yeah, I mean, I don't remember. It's quite possible that we have two, full-time or 1.5. I don't remember it, but the fact that we don't have it anymore was, if we did have it, is interesting that we lost that title funding. So...
Well, we can ask that question.
Did you want me to speak to you a little bit about title funding?
Sure.
How that works?
Well, no, I don't think we need to have a long discussion about it, but I guess we, I think we're all aware that we are, as a district, SVU, getting less title funding than we have in the past, and that it's distributed based on free and reduced, percentage of students who are free and reduced, yeah.
Yes. So our free and reduced lunch numbers continue to change, and one thing that, you know, you might be thinking, well, ours is going up, but if everyone's are going up, it still means that proportionally you're not as high as some of the other schools that have extremely high free and reduced lunch numbers. And then across the state, the numbers are getting much higher, so many more schools are asking for their piece of the title funding. So that's why everyone's piece is getting a little bit smaller every year because of more eligibility statewide.
I had asked Rick a week or so ago, and ours is like either 46 or 47%, so it's gone up. It was...
It was higher, yes. It went back down again.
Yeah, and then it went to 42 or 43, so it's back up.
But it's the, it's the spread that it's so, that some of the other schools are so much higher that makes the difference.
Okay, anything on any of the minutes? Very done. We can take these separately. And actually, we'll take them, all the minutes at once. I want to do the warrants separate, so. I need a motion.
So moved.
Okay, there you second it. That's good. Any more discussion?
We know how it works.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of minutes? The 5th, 12th, 14th, 26th. Aye, unanimous. Okay. Now we'll take the warrants. We have warrant number 1015 at $72,321.18. 1016 at $52,034.38. 1017 at $46,671.26. 2009, $21,864.71. Any comments or questions?
One question. There are a couple items on 2009 about mulch.
Yeah, per hour, I seen that one.
You saw that one, too?
Yeah. I was going to ask, is that just for the person or has he got some equipment thrown in there?
There's, there's equipment going in.
Okay, that's what I thought, and I said, boy.
When the mulch came, it was supposed to come earlier in the fall, and we were going to put it in the back of the building.
Okay.
He can't end up coming right after that very first big snowstorm.
Okay.
We put him front back there, so we had to put his pile out there.
I kind of figured it had to be equipment.
Yeah, he had his loader here.
Be over $100 an hour, so anyway.
What was the check number?
Voucher batch number 2009.
What page is that?
Page six.
Got it, okay.
Check number 20778. My other question was about the Chromebook charging cart.
Oh, yeah.
That's on page three.
We, we misordered one cart. When we got the Chromebooks last fall, we were short one cart, so we ordered another one for a classroom that was using an older card that really didn't, Chromebooks didn't fit quite as well and didn't work quite as well.
Do we need one for that sixth grade?
Yeah, that's in the, that's in, that's in, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's figured in, yeah.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? No, need a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
I second it. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Okay, no policies. Next is facilities.
Just, just one comment, facilities. The generator did its first test run last Friday afternoon, went off without a hitch, ran great. We shut all the power down in the school and ran the generator for a little bit, and Jay said it went really well. Now she's basically running once a month, just to get it up and running, get everything those...
So if we have a problem, it's done, it's on.
The only, the only, only minor thing is that we have to, our electrician has to find a way to hook up this end blowers. We said, if worst-case scenario, he could run a line from the generator to this end of the building if we really, really needed it, but everything else is hooked up, ready to go.
All right, good.
Yep.
All right. Okay, facilities.
That was facilities.
Oh, that was, that's it. Oh, perfect.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I'm asleep here.
We don't have any questions.
We're moving this along, why are we doing things twice?
Well, I'm making sure we get it right.
So the generator's running well.
Thank you.
Really, really well.
Thank you.
Except for something up at this end, right?
Need a wire.
Your pretender part?
There you go.
I got some more sticky notes in here. Want me to go further here, Fran?
Okay, next is the fifth grade Nature's Classroom trip presentation, so I'm waiting to hear that one.
Want me to introduce?
Yes.
So there is a program called Nature's Classroom. It's around the country, I believe, and the fifth grade has been looking to go this year, possibly. It's a week-long trip. I'm going to let them speak to the details. They know it much better than I do, but a group of parents have been working very hard all year long to both organize and raise money for this trip. And I asked them to come and do a presentation for prior, just kind of a prior preliminary approval from the board before they got really in-depth with this, because it is a pretty significant trip, a lot of fundraising, it's going to be needed. And so this is just their talk about what it is, what the kids will be doing, the benefit, and the cost. So Tim Spoggins is going to kind of...
Tim, can you come up here so we can have you on camera?
Yes, I can do that. There's some other parents here that are going to...
Yeah, if they can come up, that would be great.
Sure, it's okay.
Here, you have a question.
We'll just keep kicking.
Yeah, right over here.
You're funny.
Yeah, the Donkers are the ones that turned me on to the idea of Nature's Classroom. We've been talking about it since the kids were in first grade, that we wanted to do this in fifth grade. And what it is, is a week-long science and nature camp, and we're asking your permission to let us go do that during the week of school in May, and we want to take the entire fifth grade to do this. And the, what it is, is that. The kids go, they take a bus out to Silver Bay, New York, to, there's a lake there, and there's cabins, dormitory-type cabins, and the kids will stay in the cabins for a week, and they will be doing science and nature education from eight o'clock in the morning until nine o'clock at night. And we had a meeting last night with parents to talk about the fundraising for it. We talked, we were visited also by the principal at Woodford, Sandy.
Foster.
Foster. And another teacher at Monument, Deanna, and I forget her last name.
Donza.
Thank you. They have been, Woodford has been sending their kids there for at least 12 years, and the Monument people have, I'm not sure what their history is there, but they have, they have been fundraising to send their kids there recently as well, and reinforcing what I've been hearing from the Donkers over the years. It's just a tremendous experience for the kids, and something they talk about all year long and something that they carry forward. One of the more moving parts was Deanna talking about how kids are just different when they come back. They gain so much in confidence and social interaction. They just, it's a big growing experience. Mike and Megan have actually been to it, so you want to maybe tell some of the details about what goes on?
Certainly. My experience was not actually as a student there. I was a, I was a teacher for Nature's Classroom. The school year 1991 was my first jobs out of college, and just in that capacity, it was a very life-changing experience. We would accept, you know, a whole grade of kids in, and as educators in that environment, we would be with them throughout the day, like you said, from 7:30 when we opened for breakfast, all the way through nine o'clock when we close the day with a quiet sing. We usually play guitar and sing and quiet everybody down. They go out to their dorm rooms with their teachers. We have a field group where you'd be with the same students every day and do group-building, team-building type activities. There could be a very elementary-type ropes course. There can be challenges such as building a rope bridge or crossing a stream, any of these kind of things that we can make a challenge into. Then there's elective classes that are chosen at meal times. They're usually natural sciences. As you mentioned, by a lake, they'll do like a marine ecology-type class. There's animal dissections. There's balloon launches. Social sciences, teach about marketing and demographics and things of this nature. The very unique thing about this is that when you take kids out of the classroom and put them in the environment, if you're teaching about animal camouflage or evolution, and you play a game where you hide colored toothpicks in places in a defined area in the woods, and then they change sides and they find whoever, whatever team finds the most toothpicks wins. In the course of doing this, they find bugs. They find camouflaged insects and animals, and they learn about how these animals protect themselves through camouflage. And then in the next class, they might create their own beast. How did it evolve? Where does it live? What does it eat? So it connects these things in a very real way. The program does a very good job of connecting the need for education in science also with the principles of tolerance, of coexistence, and sustainability. At meal times, each meal, each table will work to have the least amount of ort. The table that has the least amount of organic recyclable trash will get a prize, you know? And so if you take, it's a family serve, so you take what you want, but you eat what you take. So if you have waste on your plate, that penalizes your table. So there's a, there's a motive there. There's a drive to, you know, look at what you consume. And then all that rolls into the whole environment of being in camp together. The most positive things that I've seen are when groups of kids come together to help a child with MS who's on crutches. That may not be a part of the challenge that we'll face with our group of kids, but to see a group of kids come together in a ropes course so everyone can finish the challenge, not just those who are physically capable, is really an amazing thing, and it is a life-changing thing for the kids, too. There are a lot of positive things. There's a program, a part of the program, it starts out with, "I'm okay, you're okay." There's even a class called that, but there's a, there's a physical reward called an I-LAC bead that's given, and kids will have I-LAC necklaces or bracelets when they come home. And if a random act of kindness is done, if someone shows leadership, or does something kind for someone in the dorm, cleans up behind somebody who might not be capable of doing it, something of that nature, they'll get this I-LAC bead to say, "Hey, you know, I saw you doing something really good. Here's a reward for that." And it's a, it's a very positive experience in a lot of different ways. Some kids, much like myself, have a really hard time learning in a classroom environment. In my education experience, I did very well in a laboratory where I had hands-on and I could, I could interact with things, but sitting down looking at somebody at a chalkboard just wasn't, wasn't what I could do. And you see kids, you know, we were warned about children. As a group of teachers, we were warned about kids, "This, this one's a troublemaker. You got to watch out for that one." And, you know, we'd take them out in the woods, and everything would be turned on its head. The kids who really had behavioral issues in the classroom with leaders out in the woods, and the group of kids that witnessed this and see this, see this other part of their personality come out, don't look at that person the same way, ever. And so it bonds the kids. It, they grow in a very positive way, and they come back enriched. I feel like it's a very, a very positive thing for our kids to be able to participate in. That's all I have to say about it.
That's it? He likes it.
I would say I've had experience with many schools that have gone to Nature's Classroom to many different sites, but it is a life-changing experience, and one of the first ones where they're really away from their family for an extended period. I think the moms cry and they get on the bus, but they really have, it's their real awakening to their independence.
Are the, would the fifth grade from Shastberry typically be there with other schools as well, or is it...
Yeah, we want to go when Woodford and Monument go. And we're just really excited about the prospect of our kids going through this experience with kids that they're going to be in middle school within a couple of years.
Good point. Yeah. Classroom teacher from here goes with them as well?
That is typical.
And it's just kind of...
Yeah, that's the normal situation, is that a couple of teachers from Shastberry would go with the, with the class.
Okay. How about chaperones? It has to be chaperones or no?
We were told by Sandy last night, parent chaperones of the kids who are in a class are discouraged. They're encouraged to be out there on their own.
Right.
But there are chaperones.
There are chaperones.
There will be, there will be more than just the two years.
Oh, sir.
Okay.
But it's based on, it's based on kids that go. Same thing with sites. You can go by yourself if you want, or you can go with a group. It just depends on what you want to do.
Okay. Now, all right, the whole fifth grade. Question I have, does every child in the class raise money? They have to fundraise?
That, that gets to the crux of a matter. The first matter here, we're here to get is your permission to do this during a week at school with the fundraising that we intend to do. As I said, we met last night with the parents to talk about fundraising, and we are committed to doing it, and there's some really energetic parents there. But it would help so much if the school board could find a way to fund this. And you mentioned the thing that's really the crux of the problem. The whole thing, for our 40 kids plus the bus, is just shy of $15,000. We have so far raised a little over $3,000, $3,500, so there's $12,000 to go. We're not going to be able to raise $12,000 and say to everybody, "Let's go." Jennifer, my wife, has been leading the fundraising effort, and she circulated a petition at the school that allowed us to gauge the parents on who said they could fund the whole amount themselves and who would need help and who would not be able to pay at all, and who didn't want their kids to go at all. That was a very small number, and a lot of us think that's probably the same number of those that just don't feel that they can afford to go. If the school board can help us raise the full amount, then we can skip that part and just say, "Everybody gets to go with the fundraising we've done and the funds provided by the school."
Well, that was my reasoning in asking the question because for me, I would want, there's, there's going to be some parents that probably feel like they can't do it, and it kind of, I went through that when I went to the school years ago when I was a little shaver. And when the kids can't go, you're kind of stigmatized. You know, the other kids look at you, "Well, why didn't he go or she go?" You know, the other kids look at you, "Well, why didn't he go or she go?" or something. So for me, it would be, I think it would be better if all the kids go and then you don't have that question at all. I mean, it's, they all go. But I don't, the next thing is, is what's our policies? Insurance. I, I hate to bring all that stuff up, but we have to, we have to chuck all that stuff to make sure we're...
This guy's on the policy committee?
Yeah, I did, with a little bit of heads up from Tim, I did a little bit of research on the policies that would be involved here. And the first one goes to the prior discussion. It's policy twenty-two hundred, which mandates that you cannot participate in some, something that's discriminatory. Okay, so that's off the table. We have to, if we're going to do this, we have to do it in a manner that everybody goes, okay? The fundraising sounds like it's met the criteria. Has to be approved by school. I assume that's been done. And that was policy fifty-two hundred. And policy sixty-three, sixty-two thirty says that whatever activities we, we participate in have to be curriculum-based. So I'm in hopes that Shasbury really embraces this as, as a manner to put forth science a little bit more aggressively than perhaps we've, we've been able to under our present curriculum. So it sounds like we've met all, all of the, that I'm aware of, unless somebody else can bring something else. Those, those are the three policies that have to be.
I just wanted to speak to the curriculum part of it. The Nature's Classroom actually sends curriculum ideas to the teachers and they work on it together. So whatever the teacher says, "I want this taught," it will be, it will be taken care of.
Megan, do you know if that goes, let's say, forward to the earlier grades? So that, I'd love to see this program become an annual event and, and us build it into an ongoing budget. But I'm anxious to, to make sure that we're doing preliminary work so that when kids do reach this, this point, there's a, there's a base for them to work from. And I, I really feel we're light in the science end of our curriculum here at Shasbury. And so if we can, if we can get that type of material into the mainstream before, then these kids have got a great opportunity here.
And there is a lot of opportunity for science. Most of the teachers there are science teachers. A lot of our friends are science teachers that, both Mike and I were teachers there. But yeah, it's heavy in science.
Which then your math is interfering in that, too, so.
What's that?
Your math falls right into place in that, too, for your science, so. Anyway, Dave.
So if a student or student's parents don't want to participate, how does that, how's that handled?
Well, we haven't worked that all out exactly yet. And that's, like I say, if, if the school board, you know, funds the rest of this for us and we can say to everybody, "We're going," I think we have a lot better chance of all the, all the parents going.
Right, no, I was, right, so I'm assuming that money is off the, you know, not part of the equation, but just, you know, and not...
Or self-absorbed.
Well, yeah, or, you know, my child isn't really ready for, for, to be away from home for a week.
Maybe it interferes with the trip to Disneyland.
When, what's the, what's the proposed time?
May eighteen.
Eighteen, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we can't make people go.
So this is a question maybe for, for, you know, Jeff?
There's, there's been ties in the past when kids haven't gone on field trips and there's alternative programming for that child.
But that might be for a morning or a day, but not for a week.
Well, it's possible to do it for a week.
How, and how do Woodford and Monument handle the funding piece of it?
Woodford is part of their school budget. Monument, they did it by fundraising.
This is why I say when we, every year we go budget time, I say, you know, let's be careful what we do. And it's, it's just me. I mean, because there may be something. I've said before, maybe, this sounds fantastic, number one, but there may be something else coming that we'd rather do than... I'll use a math intervention as, as an example, but I'm just saying, if there's always something like this that probably would serve our kids better in, in a way, as like, like he's saying, Mr. Donkers is saying. You know, it's, the kids learn about the outside, learns working together and, and respecting each other and things like that, so. I, I think that I definitely would want to speak to Central, I mean, Rick. You'd have to look at that budget. I, I'd like to fund it, but I, I just want to make sure that we can do that. If you're talking twelve thousand, yeah, so. And you've got thirty, thirty-five hundred, correct? Is that what you, yeah, about thirty-five hundred?
We, last meeting, we approved five thousand dollars to us, fifth graders, the same class, to Rutland, is that right?
That was just for next year.
That was for, that was for?
A while back, you approved sending this group to Rutland. But all the previous fifth graders had been to Rutland, to the Starbase, too.
Right.
The funding source that had run on.
Right, okay. Yeah, I, I know my personal feeling about asking kids and families to fundraise is that we shouldn't do it, period. So if, if there's a good idea, it sounds like a good idea, let's, let's, you know, put it in the, in the, in the budget. Or in this case, let's see if there is money to, to be spent on it. I would, I would generally prefer to do that, so.
Yeah, the, the parents that came last night, we had parents come who were committed to this, but who said, "Golly gosh, guys, we just went through the sixth grade trip to New York thing. We're tapped out." You know, I mean, just energy-wise, we're tapped out. And on our survey that we did, we had parents saying, "Yeah, I can pay the whole amount, but not if I have to buy cupcakes and bags and T-shirts and everything else to, to, to do the fundraising." Because so much of the fundraising that we do ends up, you know, being events at the school and the same people get asked for the money over and over again.
Well, you guys do a great job in that area. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to say thank you and for us to step up and support it. It's a great program on all fronts.
It would, it would be great. We would, we would love that.
So you're asking for permission tonight?
Permission tonight.
With the understanding that we'll look under the cushions for the loose change to...
I think it's great. We just, we really have to see where we're going to get it, because we can't put it in the budget this year, obviously. We've already said it. So it would have to come out of something, so I'm not going to say where that would be, because I don't know.
Under the cushions, right?
Well, yeah, under the cushions, maybe out in the yard there. I don't know where. But anyway, all right, so I, I need a motion then, if you've heard enough. Todd seconded it. So any more discussion?
This is on permission, right?
Permission, yes.
To allow the fifth grade kids to go to this.
Yeah, to do the, yeah, do the trip.
Jeffrey, you're, you like this idea, too?
Oh, this is a phenomenal, yeah, okay, opportunity. I, I, I took my class, rather than my start to a week-long trip, but it was, it wasn't a Nature's Closet, it was a farm. We spent a week on a farm in northern Vermont. And that was twelve years ago. And I still have kids coming back to me from that class, telling me what an amazing trip that was and how much they learned. And those kids are, it's like you said, they build a bond that's, that goes with them throughout their lives. So, yeah, it's, it's a phenomenal opportunity and much appreciated if you guys can find the money.
The only requirement I'd like to suggest is that Tim and his group report back and, and give us the information we'll need to make this a solid piece of our ongoing.
We would love that. We can, we can get, we'll get all, all forty kids in here. Yeah, we would love that. And we would love to, to see it become part of the, the school institution for, for every year.
Okay, that's why I got to talk to Central. I mean, there's got to be, you, we're not looking at it for just this year. We're looking at it for the coming year, so it's not just a one-year stint, so.
This is proof of concept.
Just a question, too. Should we have them stop fundraising now? Until we find this out? Should we keep fundraising and just have it in there?
We got momentum going from our meeting last night. We're going to keep fundraising.
I, I'd let them keep, maybe we'll only need eleven thousand. I want to try to bleed it for all we can, I mean, gee.
I just hate fundraising to myself, because again, same people are always asked for, so.
I've done that, too. It is, it's...
So I'd like to get them as much money as we can, so they don't have to do that, but...
Yeah.
Can I mention on that, just...
Most of the grandparents live out of town.
Kind of rich one somewhere.
On the idea of getting grandparents, one of the things, one of the other things we're doing to get money from people other than the people that we're always collecting it from is we, we created a website where people can donate to this effort. And so then we're using social media to get that out to all of our friends and family, asking them to, to donate to it. And we're indebted to Jen Holly of Websites and More, a company here in Shasbury, who for, for free set us up the website, got us the domain S E S fifth dot org, S E S fifth dot org.
Fifth, five?
Five.
Five?
Yeah, S, S E S five T H dot org, yes. And gave us our first, first twenty-dollar donation to test the system, so. A lot of people want to see this happen.
And, and Tim, you mentioned something earlier in the day that this is one of those things that we can push, that Shasbury does, that's kind of unique, okay, that helps people make a decision to come to Shasbury. This is one of those little marketing tools when they, when they go on our site and they see our kids actively involved in, in outer-school functions and having a good time. That this, these are little things that their decisions turn on. And, and having an active website that they can, parents, people coming here, that's one of the first things they hit, is what's the school doing? It's, it's, it's money well spent on a lot of different fronts.
Yeah, the school is, is bucking the trend of declining enrollment. Every kid that comes to town with a family is good in a lot of ways for, for the school and the town. And this is one more way that we can, we can show how good we are.
You'll do this presentation at town meeting, right?
At the school, school.
Yes, I'd be happy to. I, I forget, you have part of town meeting, too?
Yeah, it's not all you, Tim.
Our party's less interesting.
I have a, a question on the discriminatory section that you talked about. What we were thought, talking about doing with our fundraising was, you know, raise as much as we can and then, assuming we didn't make it all, kind of figure out who's able and willing to pay as much as they can and just collect as much as we can from everyone. Is that going to be discriminatory, knowing that you've got some parents that are not going to be able to contribute at all and some that are willing and able to contribute the full, you know, three hundred and sixty per kid?
I think in the intent of the policy is to make sure that you incorporate some sort of provision so that every child can go. Okay, and how you do that, it's pretty loose. But it's, I think that's the, the intent of that particular policy.
So to make sure they go.
Is to make sure you don't build something in that says, "Well, if you can't meet this, this criteria, you're, you're out." But it sounds like we've, we've handled that more than...
I think we need to vote still.
Yeah, so we, we've got the motion. Who made the motion in the second?
I think Dave seconded it.
Okay.
Maybe Tim did.
Todd did. Any more discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, unanimous? Okay? Go to work, guys.
Thank you.
Have you talked to any, any other organizations that...
We should make something positive about it. Okay. Next is the country's report.
So first up, we've started our pre-K visits that we've been doing a number of years, I think, ever since the pre-Ks come to Shasbury. They started, I think, the second or third week of January. We got back from break. Every Tuesday morning, we've had at least twenty, sometimes maybe twenty-six future kindergarteners come and spend time in music, P.E., art and library, plus have a snack. It's been a, it's been a great experience so far. They're a great group of kids. And they'll go all the way until just before April break. So it's a number of weeks they'll be here and they'll get used to. In the last week, they'll actually spend time in the kindergarten classrooms that'll be next year and get used to those rooms and see this, meet those teachers for the first time and start that transition. On January twenty-third, the staff had a in-service day here at Shasbury. We did a number of things. We got a lot done in, in one day. First up was S-BAC prep for the teachers. We got into the S-BAC portal, which had a number of resources for teachers to tap into, practice items, practice tests, resources teachers could use in the classroom with the students, get them ready for the S-BAC. Just like Donna said, the S-BAC is very similar to the MAP test that we take now, three times a year. It's computer-based. And we did some research and some kind of assessment ourselves of ours of what kids can, what kids need to do by a certain grade level, just computer technology-wise, and what they could, what they should be able to do. And we did an assessment per grade level and said, "Okay, our, our kids should be able to do this by kindergarten. Are we accomplishing that in our kindergarten classes? Yes, no, maybe. And what do we need if we're not?" Which was good. We're, we're in pretty good shape from what our assessment showed us. We're in really good shape as far as that is. We then spent some time on our MTS-S system here at Shasbury and where we've had through the first round of benchmarking. We're just finishing up our second round of benchmarking, which we'll talk about in a moment, and the data that we're gathering from that and the interventions that we're trying so far. So we talked about that as staff. And then we spent the afternoon starting the process of adopting the new generation of science standards, which will be a work in progress the next number of years as we start incorporating more and more science into the, into the classrooms, my hope. And Laura Bujo and Kathy Clark, our sixth grade teacher, kind of led that way. And it was pretty exciting and interesting stuff to, to get started with that. Finally, we're just finished up or we're finishing up. We had a, the MAP was extended a little bit because it's somebody snow days this month. So the MAP test was suspended, extended to the end of this month. But we're finished up for the most part with our MAP testing, AMES testing, benchmarking and math and literacy. And we'll be taking that data and comparing it to our fall data in those areas, which falls right in line with, with Jan Willie coming on Friday morning to work with the school leadership team, which she's going to lead us through a, a data analysis, a data in action analysis process of how we can look at our data and what we can do with it and look at our first instruction and what our data tells us and what we're doing well and what we need to, to work on. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Did teachers miss anything big from this Monday, this past Monday's in-service day for the half-day that you had planned?
Well, yeah, they, what we were going to do was a, a couple of different things. One was they were going to look at that benchmarking data that they're finishing up, get their classroom sheet, um, data sheets together and, and look at their numbers. And we were also going to do some S-BAC preparation as far as getting them online to a portal for the, it's called A.I.R., which is the company that's our contract for the S-BAC. And so the teachers have to get online, get their passwords, do a little training online. And we were going to do some of that on Monday, but we're going to actually do that in our staff meeting tomorrow night. So still get that done. And we've gotten, um, our data's in pretty good shape right now as far as getting it in, in where we need it, so.
Anybody else? Okay? I have no report. Our next meeting is Wednesday, March eleventh. And you've got your budget status report and the S V S U enrollment. Anybody got any other?
I had, I had another, but I'm also hearing Richard saying that we do have the Monday, yeah, Monday the second is the annual meeting, so. At, here, right?
Yes, at the school.
Yeah, for other, I just wanted to mention the, some of you may be following this, but the House Education Committee has drafted a bill, it's still in its draft form, I believe. You've probably been looking at this, too, Larry, so if you know more than, than I do, as of today. But one of the, one of the big pieces, maybe the big piece, is that it would eliminate Shasbury School District and all the other school districts here and create, across the state, this isn't just specific to Shasbury, create a supervisory district that presumably would encompass everyone who's currently at Shasbury, Powell, Woodford, North Bennington, Bennington, and I, I think there'd be a single district. It's not, it's not spelled out at all how that would be governed in terms of a board, whether there would be a board that would be represented by Shasbury residents, you know, a, a Shasbury seat, in other words, a Powell seat, a Bennington seat, or whether it be completely at large. And the way the bill's written, the, a district, the voters in a district could have a chance to weigh in and say, after a study was done, that they didn't feel this was in the best interest of the particular district. And then if that were the case, then the State Board of Education would still have to conclude that, yes, it was not in the best interest to, to give it to that district. So obviously, this affects a lot of districts around the state who are represented by a lot of, probably a majority of the House, so it's not, you know, I, I don't know whether it has any chance of passing or not, but...
I don't, I believe this is not the first go-around event that's been talked about before.
Alice Miller in our case, and she'd be the person to talk to.
Okay. Larry, did you have other?
Not on your line.
I can't believe it. Todd, do you have any other?
No.
Okay, hearing none. I need a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
In a second?
Second.
Dave, thank you. All in favor? Aye. We are now adjourned.